Pennington County Commission Emergency Meeting to order. And in this respect, we will be listening to a status update on the response effort. And Brian Mueller and Dustin Willett have taken quite a little leadership in this process. So, Brian, if you're prepared, we'll ask you to come forward and start the report.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm not sure our friends from out west aren't here to tell us how to do this. I'm not sure we can do it.
Well, that's your district, so Sheriff Tom, please.
I'll just be brief. Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. As you know, we activated the Emergency Operations Center at 2:00 on Friday, and it's been up and running since that time. And Dustin Willett, our emergency manager for sitting in the county, will give us a full report as to where we're at in the disaster declaration. And we also brought in a team from the other part of the state called the IMAT Team, which helps us with the EOC and all the necessary paperwork we're going to need going forward to the documentation. Again, some of them are here, and Dustin can introduce those folks. And we just appreciate everybody's assistance and patience as we went through all this. And we had a lot of staff that were stuck here and worked 24, 30, 40 hours in a row without a break, so we appreciate that. And with that, I'll hand it off to Dustin if he's here, so.
There he is. All right. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. What can I tell you?
Tell us that it really didn't happen.
I'd love to. I'd love to. I wasn't here for what I just got committed to. An update, okay. The initial concern is always the life safety issues, and that was over the weekend. That was Friday night, Saturday morning, Saturday into Sunday. Basically, most of our human life safety issues were addressed by Sunday night at 9:00. That's when we were finally able to take a break from EOC operations. So, it was everything we could do to prioritize the 911 calls that were coming in, both on a law enforcement and EMS and fire standpoint, to address the emergency needs of the public during those first 70 hours, so to speak, of the storm. Like I said, it wasn't until Sunday that we actually got caught up with where we were at. Access, obviously, was improving. So, obviously, where we're at now is moving into the recovery stage, which is the long fight, the long, drawn-out, grueling, and expensive part of recovering from a disaster. As everyone's probably pretty well aware, we have some significant livestock loss in the county, and we've got a whole lot of vegetative debris, a lot of tree branches and trees and everything else scattered from one side of the county to the other. The hills are in rough shape, Rapid City's in rough shape. A lot of the smaller communities, municipalities, I've been on the phone with them since zero hour, checking in with all of our other communities across the county, and they're doing pretty well. Hill City had itself dug out, and Wall was doing okay. Keystone, they were pretty rough shape without power for a very, very long time, and I haven't heard quite back if the whole city's been restored yet or not. But Keystone was certainly a community that had some hardships over the weekend and last couple of days as well. But, again, the people are resilient in Pennington County. We've been doing good things, and the people have been doing pretty amazing things. Some of the big questions moving forward is going to be a debris management plan. How do we get rid of the debris? How do we collect the debris? How do we get rid of the debris? The livestock issue is a significant question. I can say that that is a rapidly changing situation. The Animal Industry Board has had a very high-level meeting with a lot of people, from the governor on down, involved in that process. And the livestock issue is probably one that is going to have a state-level solution very quickly here. So, the county probably won't have to go that one alone. And we're right in the middle of that, so there's no good, clear picture that I can give you of exactly what we're going to do and who they call and what happens. That information isn't available right now, but will be soon. And like I said, I think the solution there is going to come in large part from a state-level response. We will certainly have a role to play, and we're certainly willing to play whatever role we need to play to help those ag producers and the people that are hurting in Pennington County. So, EOC operations are now on a day-to-day basis. We close down the EOC at night, or stand down the EOC at night, and then we staff back up in the morning. Obviously, there's not a lot of debris removal going on in the middle of the night, and we don't want people out with chainsaws in the middle of the night, so that's probably a good thing. The Joint Information Center is up and running and doing a fantastic job disseminating information as timely as possible to the public. Obviously, the public and the media have a thirst and a hunger for information, usually faster than we can provide it, and we're doing everything we can to meet that need as best as possible. So, we'll continue to do that. That Joint Information Center will be staffed for as long as it needs to be staffed. The Emergency Operations Center will be staffed for as long as it needs to staff. As we move in to this recovery phase, a lot of it comes down to cost tracking and contracts, and what's reimbursable and what's not reimbursable, and what documentation and cost codes have to be in place for it to be reimbursable. So, now we get into a lot of the dotting i's and crossing t's and making sure that everything is done correctly so that our declaration is in order. So, be happy to stand for any questions. That was certainly a Reader's Digest version of the last four or five days, but I'd certainly be happy to stand for any specific questions on what we've been doing.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I do have a comment, and I don't think there can be enough said about law enforcement, highway, search and rescue, and emergency management and the way they took care of the things. I know that there's several, a lot of telephone calls come in, people are disgruntled and things, but then that's understandable. But what they forget was that there's 90,000 people in Pennington County, and every one of them had about the same problem. So, just thanks a lot for everybody's hard work. And Heine, your crew did a fantastic job down Thunderhead Falls. It looked like a bomb hit that place, and now you can at least drive through it and clean it up, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, and you're absolutely right. You know, as this goes on and people continue to hurt, and as we were into day three and day four without power for some folks, you know, people get stressed out, and people get angry, and people get frustrated, and that will continue to happen as we get through this recovery process. You made a great point. We've got 90,000 to 100,000 people in Pennington County, and right now, we have a grand total of zero storm-related fatalities. So, we've got a pretty epic event that is as significant, if not more significant, than what's in most people's living memories, and we didn't lose anybody, so.
Dustin, I have a communique here from LeAnn Hollingshead from 911. In 72 hours between 0600 Friday, October 4th, and 0600 Monday, October 7th, 8,600 calls went through dispatch. Would you, you know, I know it may test your memory, but could you cite some of the people that have worked with you, some of the departments and department heads, you know, because we certainly don't know what you know?
Yeah. Not to throw a bunch of cliches out, but it truly was one team, one fight. When you make plans and you try to plan for disasters of this magnitude, you have a lot of names that you put in boxes, and that's fantastic when you can get those names down to the EOC, or when you can get those names down to the Fire Department, or when you can get those names down to the Sheriff's Office. When people are drifted in with, you know, six, eight-foot drifts and 70 mile-an-hour winds, and you physically can't get people in, it's amazing, you know, what we did. The Sheriff's, the support, and the cooperation, and the effort, and I came in and heard Sheriff Tom speaking to this, but it's not possible to describe, sorry, what people did. The Sheriff's Office, the Police Department, the Fire Department, search and rescue, emergency management, game fish and parks, the different municipalities, the Public Works folks from all the municipalities, the Highway crews, Department of Transportation, South Dakota Highway Patrol, the list goes on. Everybody that was here, everybody that was working stayed working, and the level of cooperation, unbelievable. And it started at Rapid City area schools and the other school districts that I didn't specifically get out and reach out and talk to, but the level of coordination and communication and cohesiveness started at, and Lindell knows this well, started at 3:45 Friday morning, when it was a light drizzle, and there was no snow on the ground in Rapid City, a little bit of snow at higher elevations. At 3:45 in the morning is when that coordination started, and everybody was on the same page, and everybody understood, to some degree, what might be on the way, and we all agreed to close the schools and close the county and close the city. That's the first time in my tenure that we've all been on the same page, all having that same conversation. So, that level of cooperation, that unprecedented, at least in my tenure, level of cooperation started at 3:45 Friday morning, and it continues to this instant. So, honored and proud to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one other thing, and I don't know if this happened anywhere else in the county or not, but some folks that are new residents moved into the Morris Place subdivision up behind my place, and they lost their home to a fire Saturday night, and it burnt right to the ground. The cars were still in the garage, and the whole business. They got, family of four got out, but everything else is lost, so that's one of the bad deals.
We had 13 structure fires just in Rapid City over the weekend during the middle of that storm. Obviously, the power goes out, people are trying to stay warm, people are trying to stay light, there's power problems, there's gas problems. We had structure fires all over the county. Hill City, Johnson Siding, the Valley, Rapid City, there were structure fires, yeah. And, you know, I remember, I didn't have a lot of time to listen to individual calls, but every now and then, something perks your ear up, and I remember listening to Rapid City crews who could only get a couple blocks from a structure fire with smoke in the walls, and they walked in, no hoses, no nothing, just walked in.
Okay.
What's up?
Two babies still.
Yeah, we were delivering kids, so everything happened, you know, everything happens in a storm that's happened in real life as well. So, you know, again, there, anecdotally, we could spend the rest of the day and into the night talking about the individual feats of heroism and community, but bottom line is, we did good.
Anything else?
Yeah, the Commission and other, you know, this is one of those things where, again, we're transitioning into a nuts and bolts, dotting the i's, crossing the t's. Any cost that's associated with this response, starting Friday at 2:00, which is when the Emergency Operations Center officially opened, the Auditor's Office has set up a specific cost code for all time, all equipment, all expenses, all supplies, everything that was used specifically for the storm response needs to be tracked under that specific code. And that same information has gone to the city. They've already set up a cost center within Rapid City Finance. We've been on the phone multiple times with Public Works, Finance Officers, and Mayors from Wall and New Underwood and Hill City and Keystone and Box Elder, making sure that everybody has the same information, the right information, what information we need, how we need to collect it, or not collect it, but how they need to be tracking their costs and their time and their equipment. That's one of the major functions in the EOC as we stand right now, and "normal" is a very dangerous word at this stage of the game. We're still not normal yet by a long stretch, but, you know, Police Department operations, Sheriff's Office operations, EMS and fire operations are being handled within the respective departments like they normally would be day-to-day. We're certainly not day-to-day yet, we're certainly not normal yet, but those operations aren't being coordinated through an Emergency Operations Center or Unified Command Structure at this point. They're handling business like they know how they need to handle business. The Emergency Operations Center is focused right now on damage assessment, the preliminary FEMA damage assessment process to get that right, to get the information that we need. You know, one of the main purposes of the meeting today, which is the county declaration, disaster declaration, working with the other communities to make sure we get declarations from them. It's not necessary, per se, to have declarations from every municipality, because the county one will end up being an umbrella for all of those municipalities, but it helps in the process, and there's some symbology associated with that as well, if we can get the other municipalities to pass similar resolutions or declarations. So, we're working on that. We're working on getting, like I said, the right documentation, the right forms, the right processes to the Finance Officers, Mayors, Public Works, making sure that as we move forward that the contracts are done right, that they know how to get out and get help. So, like I said, it's a long, grueling process with damage assessment, resource ordering, getting the crews and the resources and the equipment that we don't necessarily have local here in Pennington County, that we have to reach out to our neighbors to find. But all that effort is what's going on in the Emergency Operations Center right now. So, fantastic group of people down there, and you know what our normal staffing level is in EOC, so the only reason we have an Emergency Operations Center is because of the ongoing support of the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Office, Public Works, County Highway. They're all giving us the people that we need to make that Emergency Operations Center work and to effort good decisions as we move forward in our recovery effort, so.
Thanks.
Very good. I think at this point, one of the official acts we need to do is to declare an emergency, and we have a draft resolution or proclamation that, in examining it, may need some refined language that Jay Alderman can help us with, but with the concurrence of the board, I would open up that issue and would entertain a motion if you so choose.
Well, I'll make a motion that we declare a local emergency as a result of the winter storm, and it does need a little revision in just some of the wording, not in anything basic, so I would feel comfortable in making the motion to approve that.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, and Jay, you may need to weigh in on this, or Julie. We have, and I'm sure Justin can go through it, but we have a number of issues that are going to require County Commission action to authorize or direct or whatever. And part of the question is if we can effectively go through that today or not and arrive at, have enough information to make decisions. And we've had a discussion about the disposal of dead livestock, for example, and that in itself represents a relatively unique situation, and as Dustin indicated, the livestock sanitary board or Animal Industry Board is met today, is meeting in PEAR. But ultimately, whatever comes out of PEAR will need to become a working action plan here in Pennington County and in other counties. So, in that respect, we do have some decisions to make, and I think it would be important at this time to have a dialogue that brings up issues that may not have been thought of or may not have yet manifested themselves, so that when we leave here, we have a sense of direction. So, I would open the floor at this time for anyone who would suggest to us, Heine, come forward, the kinds of things we need to address.
The issue I have right now is trees. I've got thousands of trees in the right-of-way. We got them cut back to the white line hopefully by tonight, so we have two-way traffic, but if we don't get those trees out of there within a couple of weeks and they freeze down, they're going to be there all winter. And I guess, I was hoping I talked to Dustin, and we've done a preliminary estimate, and I basically could use three nine-man crews, 27 people with equipment to help clean the roads out, and we figured it'd take two weeks. And I guess, how am I going to pay for it? Dustin said he can get the people here, and he can get the equipment here, but I guess I need authorization from the Commissioners to move ahead. I don't have a cost for you, I just know I need 27 people for probably a good, solid two weeks or more, because it starts Rapid City or Rapid Valley all the way west on all the county roads.
I'm assuming you correct Dustin that that's all reimbursable by FEMA?
Um, yes, it qualifies for reimbursement. The question mark, and it's not necessarily a question mark, but no, I can't stand here and guarantee that we're going to have a declared disaster. The reimbursable cost would be about 85%, 75% from FEMA, another 10% from the state, so the county would be looking at 15% of those costs not being reimbursed, but those costs are certainly reimbursable in a disaster.
We've got to do it one way or the other, so, you know, I assume that you haven't spent all your budget for this year, so, you know, you've got the money to pay them now, and when we get the cost, we got an emergency fund somewhere, I assume, don't we, Julie?
Not today. 100,000.
There's a couple of issues with the funding. Of course, there's no estimation of the cost of what our 15% will be. There's also the question of, will it be declared a disaster for the 75% FEMA, and the question of, will we get the FEMA money or not, and when we will get the FEMA money, if we are going to get it, which could create a deficit in either Heine's Fund, in the Emergency Disaster Fund, or in the Emergency Management Fund. Under state statute, county general, any fund in the county can loan to another fund for up to nine months. That would give us the period of time that we could loan it from any of the funds that we have, that it would have to be replaced within nine months, which would give us the ability to determine if we don't get FEMA reimbursement, where we're going to make budget cuts to come up with that, or if we're going to take it out of a combination of county general cash flow, which is at 20%, it could be devastating for a budget process next year if we don't get that type of reimbursement. So, we really can't answer those questions because we don't know from FEMA, but we do know we have expenses that we have to fund and make cuts eventually to cover.
Whether we get repaid or not.
We have to go forward with them.
We've got to do it, so.
Yeah, we have reserves. I mean, we have highway and bridge reserves, we have unorganized road reserves, so we do have reserves.
Well, and county general has the 20%. That's pretty low, you know, we can go lower in that. We have some emergency disaster monies, but that's why the funding was set up, so that all the expenses will be tracked in one place. So, when we're done, we'll be able to tell you what storm-related Atlas cost Pennington County. What we would like from you today is pre-approval of all storm-related expense vouchers, so that when they come in, outside of the normal voucher process, that we can pay them. Vouchers were due today for October, which means if we didn't have this pre-authorization approval, like we do for utilities and the credit cards existing now, they would be waiting until the last meeting in November.
I have a question. When you said you could borrow from any funds, does that include the accumulated building fund and?
That one I would have to check on, and that's the one I thought of. It does have a huge balance. You cannot use any of the bonding money for an emergency, but we have several million in there.
It strikes me that.
That are not encumbered.
Yeah, that would be one of the more workable avenues if, in fact, we can do it.
If you can do it and if you can get it paid back in nine months. That is a very specialized levied fund, as you know, and it would have to be paid back.
Mr. Chair, I have some questions of Heine I'd like to go back to.
Okay.
Heine, you mentioned how many thousands of trees are down. Are we just addressing county roads, or is that part of the?
That's just on the county roads.
Yeah, doesn't include Forest Service land or anything?
Or some of the private subdivisions and the roads that access them that are public roads. No, I have not looked at those. I strictly concentrated on county maintained roads.
So, I have some further comment there. Because the Forest Service has closed down the cut-and-junk activities and removal of trees for mountain pine beetle, there are sawyers that were contracted to the county that could poss, I mean, they're, they could possibly be available to you very quickly. I don't know if you guys have thought of that?
I could work with Scott, I guess, and find out what he has for cutters and.
Yeah, because he was hiring quite a few.
And that's certainly a resource, and that's a good list because it's a somewhat vetted list.
Qualified.
And, well, and it goes beyond qualified, and that's where I said with our, the first few days when we're doing life safety operations, FEMA understands that, and, you know, the no-bid contracts and the, hey, we need a front-end loader, if you can get to your front-end loader, this is where I need you to be, we're not even talking money, we're talking, we need to get to these people. That's understandable. As we move forward from here on out, we need to make sure that we're dealing with the right people with the right contracts, with the right paper trail. While it would be great to take anybody with a chainsaw that knew how to use it, we also need to make sure that.
That is what they are.
And, yeah, that's a great list to go off of, and it's one that we've already, yeah, it's certainly one of the places we'd go to, is those crews, there's a lot of equipment that we were using in the pine beetle efforts that are very applicable to what we're doing with debris removal. So, you know, there's a small silver lining in that. Those are definitely crews that we would look at utilizing, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Do you want or need authority from us to go ahead and hire them, or?
Well, I guess I would talk to Scott Guffey, if Scott Guffey has the authority to put them to work. We'll just put them to work on county right-of-ways, and I guess you know that better than I do. I haven't.
Well, and actually, that's what they were going to be doing anyway, was right-of-way work, and so, and I know those contracts are probably finalized, they were going to be the middle of September. So, you've got guys who were hot-shot firefighters now available as sawyers.
But we got existing contracts, we may be able to do change orders on them, or amend them a little bit, take care of the storm. I'll work with Scott, and I guess.
Several, several.
If I had a motion authorizing me to work with Scott to get tree cutters out to clear the right-of-ways, that's all I need, I think.
Wait.
Julie, you need more than that.
I think what would be appropriate is to authorize the County Highway Superintendent, as well as any other department heads that have costs related to this, to proceed with clearing up what they need to, and allow those expenses on this pre-authorization so that we can get them paid, which means if he decides he has to have a combination between approving FTEs and contracts, he already has it to clear up that.
Sure.
The other part of that is in Rapid Valley, all that urban area, there's trees all over. I know City Rapid Cities said if they put them curbside, the city's going to pick them up. them up. I guess, what's the county's position on that? I need to know that, too, if that's something we're going to try and do, or if the residents have to clean up their own out there. I mean, there's a lot of it.
Well, you're going to do it for everybody in the county?
No.
Well, then we're not going to do it for one specific group, I don't imagine.
I'm just going to clean the right-of-ways.
Mr. Chair, it's going to be a costly situation all the way around, no matter what you do. But with driving down some of our county roads that you've taken care of and cut back to the white line, there's a tremendous amount of debris and trees, you know, two-foot and some of them up to two feet in diameter, that are there. And if anybody doubts that, there's pictures right here that I'd be glad to show you on camera. But how these people can take care of that themselves, I don't have a clue, because it's just too heavy a debris for most people to handle. I don't know how they're going to get it done. So I think you're just going to see that stuff sit there until it rots away.
Yeah, because I do have one chipper, and I could, I can start chipping where I can get at. Out in the forest, we can ship it and blow it right back on the, on the ground, but in the residential areas, you just might have to blow it in a truck and haul it away, so. We really don't have any sites. While we do have a couple of sites, I guess we have a little parcel of land there at the intersection of Race Jolly Lane and Twilight. We've got some, a lot there, and we have another little lot back off of Pioneer, or, no, not Pioneer, there's another street over there, Pennington, I think.
Okay.
But, I, yeah, they're going to be asking me, they're going to be, and I know most of the people in, in the valley will not be getting mail or, or paper service until the snow melts, because we did not clean curb to curb. We had, we had a lot of private citizens that plowed pass-through, and we plowed pass-through just to get vehicles in and out, and by the time we got back, they had their driveway shoveled, and there was no way I was going in there with a plow to plug everybody's driveway again, so.
Yeah.
There's going to be a lot of mail disruption and newspaper disruption, and hopefully by next Monday, that a lot of that will be melted down, and, and things will start getting back to normal.
And one thing, just on the same conversation of, of how we're going to do debris removal for the, you know, the unincorporated county areas, Rapid Valley being one of the most significant, one of the things that we did do, and, and we got the right people, was we brought in, and I, I was remiss in not recognizing these folks earlier, but we brought in some individuals from what is called the Incident Management Assistance Team from South Dakota OEM, and these are folks from around the, the state that have specialized experience, and a lot of experience in disaster management. The folks that we were able to bring in are, are the very people that were in charge and running the, the operations in Sioux Falls with the ice storm, when they dealt with 55,000 tons of debris. And, and so, these are the folks that did that just a few months ago. Not that we're patterning it exactly after it, but we've got that experience right here in our back pocket. And Regan Smith worked with the city folks all day yesterday and, and through today, and then we had a brief meeting, and then, then Regan's going to be in Heine's back pocket later on today to, to start talking about what, what one of those plans might look like, and, and what's involved, and, and I think Regan's here. If you would have any questions from him, I'm, I'm sure he's just super excited to get up and talk to you, if, if you have any questions of him. So if, if you need to, he's, he's back there, and I'm certainly, certain he could answer questions and provide a little insight on what some of these operations look like.
Well, Mr. Chair, before we do that, I, I do want to ask Heine, I know that we're talking about Rapid Valley, but because we have so many developments around the area, it would really be more than Rapid Valley, and...
Yeah, if we're going to look at all the incorporated area, whether it's maintained by the county or not, yeah, we're, then you open it up county-wide.
Well, so if the, the smaller cities take care of their own area, and then we're going to, if we, we set up areas where they can drop it off, rather than us going around and picking it up, I, I think that would be a fair way to handle it, because cost-wise, we can't afford to go around and pick up along the streets. But we could have those areas, like you're talking about, in, in the valley, but we, I think we need to identify them in diff, in a much larger perspective. I know we just talked about that, but as far as the valley, but I want to make sure...
That's about the only parcels I know the county owns out there right now. We could develop a map and say, this is a disposal site, and I don't know how...
You might have to rent some acreage somewhere for a year or something, do we...
And again, we've got some, the IMAT folks have very specific knowledge that, that may, you may find beneficial. I'd, I'd love to get them up here for you to ask some questions of, but you're exactly right, leasing land for those types of purposes is a reimbursable cost, so.
Yeah.
That's Thunderhead Falls, and it's like that from one end to the other.
Do your other gentlemen want to come in?
Yeah, Regan Smith, City Sioux Falls.
Jim Sutton, County Emergency Management.
I guess I did, I didn't know. Give a talk, or press a...
If you want to, if you want to just, a, a quick brief of some of, you know, we'll, we'll keep it short and sweet, but again, what we might be looking at here, what the scope and scale truly might be.
I, I mean, you're going to have a lot, a lot of different operations going on that are involved in, within that debris removal process, setting up, if, if you choose to do that, setting up sites that people can dump at, and then from there, what are you going to do with that product, whether you're going to grind it, or haul it somewhere else and grind it and dispose of it, and then working with your regional landfill on, on that, potentially, or another vendor. You can potentially bring in outside contractors to haul it, you can bring in outside contractors, arborists, to cut it down, and things like that. And these are all big, big operations that need to be planned out, and there's a way to do it if you're going to use that contract work, to bid it out, and you can't, it isn't, at this point, it's really not an emergency, there's not, it's not really a life safety issue, at least in terms of FEMA. So you'll have to follow some procedures, the, the request for bids, things like that, get that all in place, if you want to capture all of those federal dollars. So it's, it's, it's more of a marathon at this point, rather than, than a sprint. So you, you'll want to do it, you have a chance to do it the right way. If you rush right into it, you, you're going to make some mistakes. You might get it done, but it'll cost the county some dollars.
So, so if I'm understanding you correctly, what you're seeing is, is the conversation we just had about those sawyers that are already under contract to the county, really what they would have to do is bid again?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, if, if you're going to fully expect to, to, to get that, those federal dollars, there, there's a process, and there's so many days that, that FEMA expects, and, and it, it took us several days to, to make that happen. We did some things upfront that FEMA allowed us to do with our own resources and some, some locals, but that lasted just a few days, and, until they expected us to, to follow our bid processes and, and get several bids.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, you know, and, like I said, it'll, it'll be a long process, you know, maybe not weeks, it might be months.
So, so moving forward, what we're going to do then is develop a plan, and then are you going to bring that back to the commissioners, just so we know what's going on, or, or how is that going to be?
He's in a conversation with Julie there.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, I was having a sidebar.
That's all right. There's a lot of sidebars going on, and, and justifiably. What I was wondering then is, is are you going to get this plan together on how to handle all the debris, and then bring it and present it to the commissioner? Because I, as a commissioner, would like to know how this is being handled.
Okay, and I, I can give you what we have right now, and that is, the, the intent of this meeting, we're not going to have a plan at, at, at the conclusion of this meeting, that, that the scope and scale of what we're dealing with is...
Too much.
Is too much. I can tell you, I had a conversation with Regan at, at 1:25, when you were walking through the EOC.
You caught him.
You know, we right now are trying to put together the fact sheet on the contracting process. What are the correct steps? What do we have to do, not only for Pennington County, but for all the municipalities? What are the do's and the don'ts, and the dotted i's and the crossed t's? Those conversations have been happening all morning, and they'll continue to happen as soon as we're done with this meeting. So before any of those, before people start putting saw to wood on a, on a, you know, at the county's behest, we will have those policies, procedures, what has to happen, we need to have that in place. Obviously, we have, crews that we have now are, are folks that absolutely have been at work and will continue to be at work. It's not like things grind to an absolute halt. But I mean, as we speak, figuring out what those contracts need to look like, and what those processes need to look like, that's what's going on in the EOC right now.
Okay. And you'll bring it back to us?
Yes.
You'll keep us updated. I don't, I don't want to just have...
We work for you, absolutely.
Okay.
And, and truly, you know, the EOC, you know, we finally got everybody in and dug out and together, but the policy group, you know, it's, it's not, it's not the inmates running the asylum. It, there's policy direction and authority from our elected officials, it's, it's a partnership and, and, and definitely two-way conversation between elected officials and the community, and the, and the people, and, and the department heads and emergency operations, and, and making sure we're moving ahead, and, and serving the community, but serving the community takes on a lot of different connotations in an event like this. So we need to make sure that we're, we're doing things right. At the same time, we need to make sure we're doing it right and expediently, and, and so we will do our absolute best to blend those two, those two focuses. So yes, you will be, you, you may delete my number from your phone...
That's okay.
Relatively soon, so. But absolutely, and, and obviously, the commission will absolutely be kept in the loop on, on what the county's doing. There's a lot of decisions that you need to make, so.
We don't want to bug you. I mean, you need to do your job, but it's kind of nice to know what's going on, too.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, one other thing that was mentioned about the public safety issue that goes away in short order because of trees laying underground, not a public safety issue. Problem is that we have in the black hills that you folks don't realize, that you, you don't have out on the flatlands. And we've got these canyons like this, and we've got trees this big around that's laying on them, and they've been cut off, and the only thing that's holding them there is snow. And as soon as that snow melts, those trees are coming to the highway. So that is a public issue, a public safety issue.
Okay, we have, certainly thank you, gentlemen, for being here and providing your assistance. We have the highway, three nine-man crews for two weeks, and we have pre-approval of storm-related vouchers.
And I know Heine came to you with the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Chairman, I apologize, with, with specifics, but I think in the spirit that Julie recommended as well, yes, we need to keep you informed of exactly what the plans are, but I think, I think we need to make sure that our plans are, are what we, they need to be, rather than approving something that specific. I, I think we need, I don't know if we're at a point where we should move forward to something that, that specific. I would, I'll let Heine speak to that, but...
I agree, I guess, if we want to get reimbursed, I know the FEMA, the direction FEMA wants, and we may have to get our maps, get our, our locations, do a quick advertisement for bids, and, and go that route, and I'm afraid a lot of them be froze down and take more work to get them out of there, but we need to follow the proper steps to make sure it's a reimbursable item.
Well, Regan's going to be in Heine's back pocket as soon as we're done with this meeting, so they'll sit down, and, and we'll, I mean, we're not going to take forever to do this plan, we're working on it right now.
So, Mr. Chair, I do have, as far as those contracts, you know, a lot of times county commissioners, because of the higher amounts, and it is going to be higher amounts, we have to approve those contracts. We won't, will that kind of be suspended, then, because of the emergency?
No, I, and Regan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have to follow the, the right processes. I, you're allowed to shortcut in the very beginning, and this isn't considered the very beginning anymore. So at this point, moving forward, we have to do it right.
So you may need us to meet several...
There may be some more emergency meetings with 24-hour notice to, to get done what we need to get done, absolutely. And allow you to be presented with the information and make informed decisions about what the plans are in the county and what our intentions are. That's, that's your job as well.
And, and that's part of, part of what I'm seeking, is subjects, issues, whatever, be brought up now, that when and if the next meeting is held, that we have an agenda, and can be prepared to have the information we need to make good decisions. And Jay, do you have anything to offer at this point, in terms of how we walk through this?
I think you described it about as best as you could, Commissioner. You'd like to have an agenda, but by definition, an emergency is a little bit ambiguous, because you're learning as the day progresses, what is the latest disaster or emergency that needs to be dealt with, removal of livestock. Some of these things still sound like an emergency to me, but there's some technicality apparently with FEMA, and what qualifies, and what you got to show to have it declared such. So, yeah, you may be called upon to have more emergency 24-hour notice meetings. So I think, I think you stated it right, and Dustin's made it pretty clear that that may be happening in order to have an appropriate agenda, but at the same time, common sense kind of dictates, you learn as you go. An hour after this meeting, there may be something come up that we thought we were basically addressing everything right now, and you learn something an hour from now, so be patient, and common sense, I think, will prevail.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to comment on the livestock, dead livestock situation. We, I've had a conversation with a neighboring rancher who called this morning and has extensive involvement in, in livestock activity, indicating that he had a site that was, I think, an old gravel pit that could be opened up even further for the burial of dead livestock. He offered a truck to haul and that sort of thing. Well, that, that was at least the identification of a concern that we are going to have to deal with. And in conversation with Dustin and Holly this morning, I had gone to the stock grower's office to contact Sylvia. Note on the door said, I'm, I'm in peer at a, an animal industry board meeting, and that's what Dustin referred to earlier. The potential for a rendering company, the only one in the state, to get involved, to pick up dead livestock, the potential for a, an arrangement exists, and the involvement county-wise may be simply identifying areas for dead livestock to be brought to, staging areas just like tree limbs. And yet, the fact that that's evolving, the preliminary information was that the rendering company would put a number of semis on the road, and that they could process somewhere in the neighborhood of 800 a day, and would only charge the fuel. So, and that falls outside of the FEMA boundaries, so that's an issue that I think we need to address at some point, when, when we have a plan or a preliminary plan.
And just to speak to that, and, and it goes along with what Jay just said, as far as changing conditions, that was the information we had two hours ago, and right before I came to this meeting with the animal industry board meeting that they're having right now, that data has already changed. It's now, they're, they're talking $5 a head, and the governor's saying that, that funds may be made available from the state to cover those costs, and so I think, I think we're going to see a, just, just, I think we're going to see a state solution for that, but even the information we had when we sat down a couple hours ago, has already changed from, from the rendering company and the animal industry board. So this is such a dynamic changing, like I said, that the, the meetings are happening to address these things... has already changed from, from the rendering company and the animal industry board. So, this is such a dynamic changing, like I said, that the, the meetings are happening to address these things as we speak. So, it's such a fluid and dynamic environment right now that, that we'll know more as, as time goes on, so.
And if you believe KOTA, at noon, they said there was two out-of-state rendering companies coming in, too.
Mr. Chair, I also, I still have a, a question, oh. No, that's okay. No, no, go ahead. Uh, we'll finish it up. I know.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, just, uh, to give them a couple pats on the back, but, uh, Daryl from Senator Thune's office is here, and Mark from Senator, sorry about that, guys. Mark from Senator Thune, right, right today, you're Siamese twins. But Mark from Senator Thune and Daryl from Senator Johnson's office, I'm glad to have you guys here to show, show some interest in this, and I'm sure we'll be needing your help before this is over.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The losses to the individual ranchers, do that, that becomes part of that FEMA total, am I right?
No.
No.
This is, uh, the FEMA declaration that we're looking at is public infrastructure. So, um, you know, Black Hills Power is a, a corporation, uh, those, those power lines don't count. West River Electric, co-op, does. So, it, it's public infrastructure. Uh, a tree across a house, a tree across a trailer is devastating, but that's not, that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at public assistance. Uh, the producers, the, the livestock losses are massive. That's not, that's not a, part of FEMA's purview. So, and, and you know, as far as what we're doing, I, I had a good meeting with Lindell, and I'm sure we'll have many more. Uh, but we are efforting some plans, regardless of what the state's working on. Um, we'll certainly incorporate whatever comes out of this meeting that they're having as we speak. Uh, but, but, um, you know, we, we are efforting some plans to, to help. Uh, I, I think we'll offer those, uh, with, with the guidance that we've already had. Lindell spoke to most of them already, but we're working on those plans. We're working on identifying potential drop-off points and calling the rendering company and/or companies. Uh, right now, we only know of one, but, but, uh, you know, we, we certainly aren't sitting on our hands waiting for the state or the feds to offer a solution. That, that's not what we are doing. So, a, a better solution may be presented in a very timely manner that we take advantage of, uh, but we're certainly efforting plans as we speak to, to assist our, our county folks.
Thank you. Okay, at, at this point, do we have any other issues that need to be raised? And also, is there any action that we need to take further? So that we're either helping or at least getting out of the way. So, Julie, anything you see that we should do?
Yes, I need some type of direction on how quickly you want me to pay these storm-related costs. Um, in the past, we have done it on a pre-approval, a, um, pre-authorization motion, which you authorize us to pay storm-related bills as they come in, rather than waiting for the monthly voucher cycle, and then we simply list them in the next week's minutes. Now, if you're going to have weekly or every other day meetings, we can bring them in at that time. Um, and then at each meeting, you will have a specific list that, that you want to maybe make more public than you do the normal voucher list. But if we could have that, if that's the board's desire.
So, you'd need a motion for us for pre-authorization of storm-related. Um, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we authorize the auditor's office to pay the costs of any, um, storm-related expenses as they come in.
To be listed in the next week's minutes.
And to be listed in the
The next meeting.
Next meeting's list.
Yes.
In next meeting's minutes.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Now, do we need a motion to say we're going to meet every other day?
Mr. Chair.
You're going to do that. You didn't need the other motion. You could do that.
Mr. Chair. I think what you can do is postpone this meeting until a given time of the next day, or the next day, or the next day. Uh, we don't have to adjourn. So, instead of a given time that we're going to meet, as long as, um. Well, each, each day, yeah. That's why I'm just saying that we have to pick a time and a date that we're going to meet. We wouldn't have to adjourn this meeting.
The logistics of, um.
I, I don't have a problem particularly, but I don't. You know, if FEMA's going to get
We've done it before.
FEMA's going to get touchy, um, we want to make sure we're doing it right. You know, I'd hate to have them say they didn't, that wasn't an official meeting, so, I don't know, I.
Well, unless someone raises an issue that, um, appears to change the thinking, I, I'm comfortable that, uh, we can call a meeting in 24 hours and, and give adequate public notice and proceed without, uh, kind of rolling the thing ahead, so.
Not now.
Mr. Chairman, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. That would be my pick, I guess, of the options, as it sounds like. Uh, within 24 hours, uh, we can have an agenda, we can have a list of items that need to be addressed, whether it be for FEMA reimbursement or some other, uh, issue related to the disaster. So, uh, I think we can cover it that way, 24-hour notice, just like you did for this meeting.
Thank you. Anything else?
I think a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in the second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.